Yeah, all them big toys belong to some of Wilmer's cousin. You know, I had to talk to Tim Iker or whatever and said that.
Yeah.
You know, Wilmer, he's actually a cousin, that's the, or he's related. And I said, well, he's related to everybody.
Yeah.
All right.
Now, when you go through the area, why? You don't want to talk to anybody because you're going to get fun to be related to. And then my wife's related to Jeff. You know, I just can't get away from him.
The gene pool is pretty shallow around here.
You're ready to rock and roll, Claude?
All right, I'll call the meeting of Riverdale Town Council for June eighteenth to order. We have our minutes, we have review. I make a motion, except for minutes.
I would second that.
Here it is.
Can I get a roll call vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Wilmer?
Yep.
Claude?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Okay. As we don't have a representative yet from DLZ, Ryan, you have for us this evening.
A couple of things. I did turn in to Claude the item response letter, which would be the last time that the people decide it. And then also turned in the letting hopper to the state that we were required to do within notice. And they already approved that letter, sent it about signatures to make the deadline, but they just want us to sign it, so it's what it's called. We had a water main break on Fox Rush and Barley Knob that ended up being, um, there was about three stones about this big that were buried with the sand on the pipe. It just wore a hole right inside the pipe. A hole was about three fingers wide, probably, about a big. And they, we put a twelve inch band clamp on it and we're back in business, so. That was back, all that pipe back was back building stone, so, or started sand, so it made it a little bit more bigger. Do the sands keep caving in on us?
Caving in.
And Bill Ford's managing thirty-five hundred.
So, uh, and thank you, Liberty, that came in, they brought all the chiefs. So, but they didn't get that done. Um, then we also had, um, on the Illinois Street by the library, the, uh, we had that ISO test several years back and that hydrant, we kept, had no flow to it, we kept, they had me a valve closed. Well, it wasn't a valve closed, there was no pipe in between that hydrant and the other valve up there. There would be no pipe in the ground. Um, so, yeah, we basically had the whole thing done open already. Um, so we had Todd come out, take a look at it, and Claude came over, take a look at it. And we connected it, so it is connected now, it's a loop system in there, but that also explains why we shut Maple Lane off, it shut the whole thing down. So hopefully that helps everybody with pressure in that area now, so it'll take care of that. But yeah, I have no idea how there was no pipe that was put in there, it was in two thousand and four. Um, as to how that never got put in, so, but it is in there now. Um, and that'll help a lot, a lot of issues that we're having in that direction. Both of those, everybody's back off the oil order advisories, so everybody's back up in full force, so. And I do believe we're still waiting on the meter for the list station.
Yes, sir.
Um, did you get a confirmation when that's coming, if they have any idea?
Uh, Mike goes reached out, he's waiting on a reply from the meter company to say when it's going to be shipped out.
And that's referring to Pedro meter out there, so we're at the Mercy event when Vaxi's shipping it, or when parts come in for it, so. Yeah, Claude told me he was tired of seeing me because there's nothing but bad news every time he saw me.
Too many times.
Yeah. That's all I, that's all I have, I don't know what else Eric has on this list.
And that meters on the, on Fort Wayne, are they still after it?
Yeah, that's that, that's that meters for one.
They still after it, trying to get that?
Yeah, I, I think their, the powers to be are okay, because we keep, we send them all the information, they're okay. It's kind of just a crossover between the, you know, filling the bill out and all that stuff, and just making sure we're staying on top of it, so. But we are.
Every month I send a number to Tom and over the number eight, so.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Anything else for?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Danny. Apologies for being late.
Yeah, we got rained in, huh?
Yeah, twenty-seven was essentially down at one lane with all the water.
Well, it looked like it really letting her have it all, what, it's a handle, man.
Came down really cool.
Black. Yeah. Sick, just snuck a little bit. I dusted one here, and graced that swing, swing apart, up in the air and kaboom! Hit them chains and man, I will, Diane never hurt, but I've hurt. That will smell, and I shout out, "Over the fort, I, what's going on?" Man, was it boom. Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, no real updates on waterworks improvements since last time, other than, um, I've requested a proposal from Dixon Engineering to do a, essentially, what is in place of the final inspection. And a report detailing, you know, what all got done, and then the status of the current towers that not get performed as part of the project, it was not in their scope of work originally. Um, so I've got that in front of you guys to approve, you guys are okay with it for a lump sum fee of ninety-nine hundred dollars, and that includes both towers. So.
And Dixon's the one that checked it out, and it's?
Correct, so I've got, uh, if you look in that packet on sheet four, it would be, you know, agreement that you guys, we'll sign it, you guys are okay with it. Um, and then sheet five kind of details out that lump sum for ninety-nine hundred.
Want to tell me a story after?
Oh, yes, sorry, so I apologize. So that, I've already discussed it with SRF and Brandy, and she has approved it to be paid out through SRF. Assuming that's, I'm just going to do it. So if you guys are good with it, I would ask for a motion for the town to approve, um, the contract for a total of ninety-nine hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion, uh, we accept, uh, I guess it's okay if you guys are ready, okay, then?
The engineering.
Motion, uh, we accept that ninety-nine hundred and pay that. Second that.
That was, that was something I didn't request if you did.
That's what I was going to ask, is that something that's standard on a project like this, that should pay, or?
We got written up for not having the final inspection done, so that's why we, we didn't have that. It was done, but there was no report.
Yeah, it was kind of, again, it wasn't in their scope of the work for the contract, so, uh, we dropped the ball, or Dixon dropped the ball, but ultimately, yeah, per Dixon Engineering, that's typically part of the work that goes into the, uh, the tower work. They typically do the inspection, and then there's a final warranty inspection, warranty prepared as part of the work that was done. The warranty period is over, English for the gap to fill, but they would have done that, which could have been used by them, but we didn't have that on hand, so.
It just wasn't, didn't get written up in the beginning for their scope or something?
Yeah.
And SRF still approved it?
Uh, correct, yep. So it would be a matter of, for Stephanie's benefit, it would be a matter of, um, sending them an executed agreement along with, once you get the invoice, you know, approving that, and then sending to SRF and it's good to go. So it's technically not part of the project being contract, it's kind of like separate, but still included with the project funds.
Okay.
So, I'll, when we get to it, I'll, I'll be over.
That was my next question, could we, could we still use that money, since it wasn't included in the project?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I already gone through that later, and she's approved it, so.
All right. Can I get a roll call vote, Jeff?
Aye.
Wilmer?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Motion passes.
For the trail, I was meaning to drive up through there, but I ended up taking a different route, so, um, the earthwork and demolition are ongoing along State Street. Uh, looks like the current sub-completion deadline is on this first twenty-two-five. What I forgot to include on here is, we received a proposal for the MOT, which is on page six.
So what? What was it?
So, so essentially, the contractor is proposing a certain MOT setup at River Road.
What's MOT?
Oh, sorry, maintenance and traffic. So barrels, signs, all that kind of stuff. Uh, essentially, as we have it on the plans right now, when, you know, all that work was going to be done, um, and the road had to be closed off, the intent would be that the route through town may be Main Street to Second Street and over to Page Road. Um, so what Fleming is proposing is turning, um, that portion over there by, sorry, I'm forgetting what, is that therapy right there?
Uh, by the, you know, fire station, gas station, and everything like that.
They're proposing to turn, turn that into a one-way while they're doing all that work against the road and the sidewalk and everything like that. And part of the reason for that is that there's just so many entrances in and out of those businesses that, um, I don't know if you guys have seen the, the lights that they've been using instead of drivers and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Issue would be that if they tried doing that, we had so many entrances and exits there, we can't guarantee that traffic won't drain up while one-way is going, somebody's trying to get out of those trucks. Uh, so, you know, me, Alex, and Casey looked it over, we didn't really see a concern with it, so it was just a matter of, um, can your guys approve, you guys are okay with it for not, uh, setting up that way?
So we got one-way coming in from?
Page Road side.
Yeah.
All the way down, all the way down Page, okay. Down Second Street.
What's their timeframe look like on that? I mean, I know the weather is one thing.
Yeah, Alex mentioned something along the lines of a month. Uh, I'm not sure it's going to take all that time necessarily, but, um, it'll be, it'll be out there for a minute.
And when would they like to start that?
I don't have a firm date on that. I can get, I can get back to you with, with that.
It'd be nice to get something in the courier.
Yeah.
Before, ahead of time.
Could actually go the other direction?
So they consider that, um, however, because they're closing that, that lane to that direction, they're concerned that has people who approach that and seeing it open, they would go.
You know, with the bridge being out, there's a lot less traffic on that road than there is on?
The other way.
The other way. I'm guessing, I, I don't come in up this road anymore, I go up, come up second, let the road all the way in, while the traffic coming through town goes that way, and then turns over.
Yeah.
I know, and it, I know the D's, traffic would be easier coming in.
No, that's a good point.
Because right, right now, those businesses right there, there was a lot of business with everyone going in that direction, because they'll go all around.
You're going to have to look around, yep.
They're not.
No, and that's the only, that's the only concern we have. I mean, some of these businesses you can access through, like, their purchase or whatever, but some you can't.
I don't know if that makes a difference.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's a, that's a fair point. Um, I mean, we'd, we'd have to run a pass, pass and see what they think.
You're coming in from the west.
Uh, correct, currently through the setup, yeah.
That's the side where it's staying open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the lane that's open then.
Mm-hmm. So.
I got a question on that trail, that's about the part. They asked for that going back on our drive going to the town hall. And we have to stay off of that? To the town hall. And we got the fact, the factory's trucks going in there too, to, to go to the loading docks.
Oh, for, for rental taxes?
That's all asked for. We don't, we're not going to have to stay off of that, are we?
No. And then they've got pylons back there that are?
Going to the trail, yeah.
Going to trail.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's, that's, I see that, yeah.
Well, I asked the asphalt guys.
People been asking, I just wanted to.
I asked the asphalt guys, and they're like, no, once it cools, it's good for anything.
Well, you're referring to, if that's not considered part of the trail?
Trail, yeah.
No motorized vehicles on that trail.
Yeah.
So how do you go back there if you can't put motorized vehicles on it? That's, that's.
That's what I want, though.
Yeah, because they didn't widen that road, right, but it's asphalt with the traffic.
They asked for the whole ride down.
Yeah.
So that section. We got semis that go back in there to the loading dock, so, you know, they're, they're going to be on that, so.
So that section won't be, you'll have motorized vehicles in that section, though.
Yeah, now, have, have they replaced the asphalt?
Yeah.
There's now.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's.
That looks nice.
No, that, yeah, so, but I, I don't know if they thickened up that section, they didn't, they did, okay. So should be all right, all that storm was taken out and brought into, but they can get up through there. Not that reason.
Okay.
Actually, all that stone went over the water plant, made a nice little roundabout for the trailer and stuff back here, instead of hauling it out here, after you drove the water plant, made it circle right back there, so. Hey, we are just all checking to just see if there's anything that stands out. So regardless of the traffic, I guess other than maybe just checking in with them to see if maybe it's feasible to go the other way, just for the purpose of those businesses. You guys are okay with one-way in either direction or?
Yeah, do, and, and, yeah, I agree with you, there's so many people that going on at them things, and it was a mess the other day. Two-way, and here come a buggy, it run the red light, and it come all the way through, and I'm sitting behind it, and he's not moving, and I beat the horn, and he goes, "Well, here come a buggy with five cars behind it."
Yeah.
Well, those things are on length, they're timed out, so they're on a timer, so.
Yeah, the buggy just runs slow enough, yeah.
But basically, it's set up now for the eastbound traffic to come in and go straight through.
I think you're right.
Westbound will be.
You better circle this way, circle that way.
Uh, yes, technically, because, I mean, theoretically, you could bypass all things, just loop in either direction, but, yeah. In, in, in general, yes, the intent was that if the road was closed down for a period of time, you could go either way. This way, they're just trying to facilitate to not shut down already.
Yeah, if we could definitely get a start date, that they're, they're planning on doing that, so I can either, well, put it in the courier, post it on Facebook, Riverdale Happening, whatever. Um, that way, all of our faces are covered and there's no surprises.
Sounds good.
I know, I, I know I'm going to, but it's okay. I can at least say I tried.
Uh, let's see. Uh, four, twenty-two-four streets, um, West Street, Harlow's watering side and seat per contract. Illinois Street, uh, to be completed in the spring of twenty-two-five. Storm insulation is complete, concrete work ongoing for first sidewalks and driveways. And then I do have a pay application under six presented to you. The total balance due for this payment would be two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Now, but the work performed to date at about seventy-eight percent. So I would ask council for a motion to approve, uh, pay application six for a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Has Harlow got a schedule when they're replacing a lot of that side on West Street and filling in when the remains were repaired, or the shut-off were all repaired?
Don't have that information, but I can get that for you.
If they want someone to walk that with them, give me a call.
Okay.
Everybody laughs, they know.
So, so, so what's the issue there?
It's holding. I sent Casey the pictures, it's curled back, a potato chip.
Put it down in the morgue.
Yeah, there's, there's gaps, three inches wide.
Wash it, you're not going to save it. Re-seed it.
Rip it up and just put new down.
And you don't even mess with the sod.
You know.
It's quicker. The other stuff came up and looked better than the sod did in a week's time, you know?
I've probably laid plenty of sod myself, so.
Yeah, they didn't want.
For almost two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. And there are a lot of spot, what, there are three of those shut-offs fixed? Where they just left, it's wide open with nothing in there right now, and.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
It's a pretty nasty trip hazard as it is if somebody go through there. Well, I would make a motion then, pending that stuff all being done, is that part of that money that they're requesting, that two-hundred, two-hundred and sixteen thousand going towards that West Street as well?
I'll have to check the pay application, but we can review it here.
Because I would just say.
Yeah, they'll, 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 we'll make sure they get to it, um, regardless as part of the contract, so it's not up to par, then. Ultimately, uh, Brooks will.
There's still money left on that anyway, too, to hang, to be hanging out there.
Correct.
That being said, I make a motion that we, um, go ahead and make the payment on action item number five, the two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and, or, two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
I'll send it to that.
Roll call vote?
Aye.
Wilmer?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Let's see that, item six, uh, twenty-two-five streets, uh, they will remove asphalt from Indiana to West, uh, West Street soon. Brooks had called, um, they previously discussed as an option, they feel like they can get the block, um, on First Street between Indiana and West Street done before the fair. So they will be starting on that soon. Issues with that?
I got a new one, I, I wasn't aware.
Okay, so I'll, let me, let me get those dates to you, I don't have specific dates, but, um, I will double-check. Again, they felt confident they could get it done, but I'm not sure. If you guys have any concerns on it or whatnot, then I can certainly.
They can, they can get it done, well, just let them keep going.
I don't think, I don't think they're going to call it back up on, uh, First Street out there.
Yeah. But I'll, but I'll try to get like a good, um, um, days to see the, what they expect the length to be, to make sure it's not, uh, too close to that buffer.
Now, and they, are they going to asphalt West Street, First Street, Illinois Street all at the same time, is that what their project is?
I'm not entirely sure.
I believe that was the plan, to get all those asphalt completely to the top for the fair, and then come back and knock out the chunk here after the fair.
Correct. No, I'll, I'll double-check, because I was part of the conversation right there, so let me check it out, I don't know.
My understanding, too, that.
Yeah.
Kind of eliminate the sense in those bad seams.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Let's see, water pressure is installed now, industrial part, uh, case still going through that with, uh, rain there, that's ongoing, and, uh, I think we've got that connection, whether?
Most of it happened, yeah, happened.
Okay. Those are all the bits I have.
What's the deep, deep hole down? Illinois Street on the north side by the, by the, uh, library?
The northwest side?
It holds extra heat.
Yeah, there was, there was a big, I guess, must have been fiber optic line down there or something that, they have exposed. Yeah. Only reason I go is we pulled a barrel and they had to wa, did that water came down there, it was a big stuff.
Part of the trail?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's over the top of the trail right there, but it, yeah, that, yeah. Hopefully there's a barrel back on it, because we had, we pulled the barrel, so they're grabbing a new one. Yeah, there should be a barrel lined out, but they put, they put it back on, I put it back on, it was easy.
And I don't know about your opinion, but to me, you could scratch off number seven, just, I mean, bring that back, Todd, so.
Yeah, I'd love to remove a bunch of stuff off here.
That's what I was going to ask, to remove some of these.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
So we're looking at, like, for example, those, uh, oak plant, plant reviews?
Yeah.
Are those pretty much?
The Henry Loniger property drive and the Henry Lowengar? Same thing.
Yeah, well, like, that, that should be changed to pretty on that, I think. Who's Lowengar, you know?
I know, this would be Loniger.
It's Loniger.
Yeah. And revive, we got that taken care of, don't we?
Revive is done.
Yeah.
Um.
So, one of those could be reviewed.
Our country home still has tentatively something coming.
But those are new plans.
But those are new.
These plans, I believe, are already been reviewed and everything.
Sounds good, and then I've kind of got holding off onto these, but these are the recorded agreements for the River Road Cemetery Project, so, um, I can do whatever you guys want me to do, that I can personally deliver them, I can give you a staff name, cut them up.
Okay.
What do you think is easiest?
I, I'd like to have copies of those here in the office, and then, hard, we want to go moving forward from that, but.
And, uh, and you have everybody calling, recording that meeting. But, yeah, I'll drop this off.
Did we ever hear anything more on the design for the bridge back by the park over the creek? I know we were told at one point that that could be lowered, is that where just kind of got left, that Hundred Deer Flood Plan? It's basically something else, it'd be up to us. Maybe next year or the following year, when it slows down, we look at, maybe, uh.
Is, is this a, uh?
Pedestrian bridge?
This is a regulated drink?
It's in the flood part, it's in the Hundred Deer Flood Plan.
Yeah, I, I just say because they evidently changed all this stuff within the past year, so now when you're dealing with stuff like that, um, whatever it is you do, you just got to make sure that, there is zero rise in the floodway elevation. And just kind of caused a little bit of trouble in the sense that, like, yeah, there's a whole bunch of requirements in those DNR permits now that is very kind of intensive, including modeling and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
It's fun stuff.
The water in the creek gets as high as that bridge?
We got to know.
We got a problem.
My house just flooded.
My gulf, that bridge is steep.
Back to the trail, the first dot with Zach developing a possible plan for location.
That, that.
Still on the table, but it's not, nothing actively, nothing happening at this point.
We're waiting for X code. Cur, correct, so that kind of, because I think it's still on hold, so I don't think any control on there currently, and we've had no, uh, update for that.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Anything else for DLZ?
On Oak Stein, or not Oak Stein, Page Road sewer extension, uh, Vic's there, the shoe store place.
Yep.
Can't seem to get any answers on what, what the, you know, what's going to happen or what. I don't know if Steve needs to answer that, you know, see, by the way, it's.
No, I mean, any, any, any questions you have on that project, you can send them directly to me if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, I'm not, do you know what his questions were, or do you?
He just can't find anything out about the project.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And he needs, um, uh, so who, who should I have talk to, you or Todd or?
Uh, I, I probably have the most information of anybody.
Okay, what, what's your first, uh, number?
Uh, two-six-zero, uh, let's go with my cell phone, four-four-three, four-seven-two-seven.
Four-four-three-seven?
Sorry, two-six-zero, four-four-three, four-seven-two-seven.
Okay, all right, I'll have him call you then. He called me last week, I said, well, I don't know, maybe who's heading that up or?
Yeah, uh, the contractor is, uh, underground, um, we, we've got some cobbles and stuff like that, but more so from a perspective of having us approve them. So we can get this stuff ordered, so the prices don't go up down the road. But there's still, uh, I called him earlier today, I left a message for all the contractors, um, cause nobody's reached out yet to me to, um, indicate that they're wanting to start an intention. So last I heard, for example, um, API for Greatville Road, they're still looking at like George's fall. Um, list, the listation of Page Road, they still didn't know when from the last time I talked to them. The line in projects, they were looking to start, you know, after the garage sale, so, you know, essentially this week we're down the road. But again, I still haven't gotten a from date on that, so, uh, as soon as I, as soon as I get some more information, I'll send you guys an update regarding all those four projects.
Good.
Do we have all the information we need on the ordinance for the back slope?
No, um, I, I gave you all new ordinance, uh, agendas because I was waiting, well, Zach wasn't able to make it today and he's not able to zoom in, um, so those plus the purchasing policy are scratched until, um, he can join us again.
Well, to us.
Okay.
That's it. You have something for us?
I, excuse me, David McCoy, I spoke with this gentleman a couple times about a water bill that I received.
And your address, please?
Yep, one, two, three, two, four Hackamore Drive.
I'd ask you to stand, but I see you have a problem.
Big problem.
Okay.
It's Mr. McCoy, he's, here's his history.
For each of you. You'll see where I've billed Mr. McCoy, um, on the left side, it'll say billing, um, the most recent billing being at the bottom. Um, consistently minus, uh, one month where there was a penalty added. His bill typically ranges about seventy-three dollars. Um, this last month's billing was a hundred and seventy-nine. There was still a remaining balance that rolled over into this month's billing, um, that was four dollars and fifty-three cents worth. But I'll let Eric give his knowledge of the, the consumption and all that.
When you look at his history, he's above fifteen hundred to two thousand gallons. In, uh, the month of six, it's sixty-seven hundred gallons. We just read meters yesterday and it was eighteen eighty, so why that month it went high, I don't know.
Are you able to data dump it back here?
Yeah, I just haven't got to it.
No, you need to data dump it so you know exactly when the water was used. And just back to normal, the water went somewhere, whether it was outside the specator or something on, but I mean.
That's time of day and everything, correct?
Um, I, not, I'm surprised, it'd get time of day of.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I checked it every hour for three months.
It would show if it was running through the night or. You say you were, you weren't able to find out if it was nonstop.
I haven't read it, yeah, just read the meters yesterday.
Okay.
Do you have any indication of your home of why the spike in the water use?
I'm, as you see, I'm handicapped, I'm the only one sitting there, there's not a toilet running. This has been a very wet spring. I haven't watered since the second year when I finally got my yard anyway. And y'all, or the other gal, I guess, gave a one-time credit for, it was gigantic. So you go back five years and see, I'm gonna use the same amount each time. I do have a water softener, I had them come out and check it, nothing's running. While we were on the phone together, he had me go up to the garage, it wasn't moving. I haven't even used the hose in three years, cause I can't physically go out there and move a hose anyway. So I, I told Eric, I said, this bill is an anomaly, I said, I'm not gonna pay that. Said there has to be a mistake, he said he's gonna come back out and read it, it's back to normal, so I just don't know what that could be.
Eric, any idea what went wacky back in April, April seventeen? I'm just looking at another bill, it was a hundred and fifty-one.
There was.
Oh, it's probably behind one.
Yeah, there was, there was a billing and then there was a penalty, there, there was a missed billing, uh, payment.
I don't see an issue doing with it, but I wanna see pending the dump records. I'd say we'd be willing to, I mean, it's not my say, but I would think we'd be willing to work with them. Once we get the, the records showing, just to make sure that.
I didn't fill up book.
No, this would just show, this would be more useful for you than it will be for us, cause it'll show if it's running through the night.
It's gonna show a time it started, stopped, you know?
So we can get that fixed.
And how many gallons was that particular time, so I don't know exactly how your guy does, this, from here it works. Huh? Yeah.
You can set it for hours, for every hour if you want, for like three months out, so.
He's been data dumping and seeing when the, the water was used.
So you can figure out what actually happened.
So do we wanna go ahead and, we're still wanna see that dump, but do we wanna take the average? And credit them back for the average of the three of the months, credit that balance back?
That's good, so what do I, cause this bill's coming up, what do I pay on this one plus the four dollars, like seventy-six bucks or something?
I, I'd have to go in there and completely adjust things, it's not just, just a shift in numbers. I have to go in and take your monthly sewer average and then deduct that from whatever sewage usage you had for this month's billing.
Yeah, you have to pay the wa, you have to pay the water, you only can duck the sewer.
Yeah, we give you the credit on the sewer end of it, which is the larger amount of, uh, than what the water is.
So I'm just gonna get a phone call then to say with the number?
I, I will give you a phone call, Mr. McCoy.
Once she's adjusted, that she'll have to call you.
If I don't answer it, please leave a voicemail, so I know what the number is, so I can get that in.
Okay.
As if I don't recognize it, now I have him, my name in my phone, but I don't answer anything.
Everybody's got his number.
I don't know. But you had, you had enough that's solution.
Don't get rid of it. You might need it down the road again.
Uh, you could have, as fat as I am, you could have knocked me over with a feather and I went, wait. And instead the usage was almost triple, like, I'm sitting here.
All right.
So thank you very much.
Yeah.
And I'll just wait to hear from Stephanie then.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for.
Oh, no, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I'll get out of this airplane chair here in a second.
Need help?
I guess somebody yanked me up.
Right, no, did, oh, Roger?
Thank you. I've been rocking and rolling there for minutes. Thanks again. Thanks for, oh, y'all's time.
Yeah.
Other ordinance. Correct, all right. What else do you have, Stephanie?
Um, so the ordinance violation, um, I put in front of you guys, uh, ordinance five twenty. I have a resident at one, three, four, one, nine, Second Street that has several concerned residents coming up. And asking me if there was a ordinance in place, um, regarding junk automobiles, cars on jacks, uh, scrap metals.
Parking on the sidewalk.
And.
It just goes on and on.
All, all the things, um, but this particular residence has had a automobile on jacks and jack stands. Honestly, probably since I started in this position, so back in April of last year. Um, and there's, if there has been work, it's been so minimal that it's not, I mean, it's not on wheels, not in function, even there's, I don't even think there's a motor in it. At the current moment, um.
Backyards, you gotta get cleaned up and get the junk on the backyard dude.
Now, this, this, you're talking about the house.
This is.
This is a guy that came after me.
Next to Mr. Pocoggi.
No, different one, but.
One, three, four, one, nine is next to Mr. Pocoggi.
Next to who?
Next to Mr. Pocoggi's house.
Across from, uh.
Elmer still owns that?
Illinois Street almost runs around.
Elmer still owns that.
Elmer still owns that?
Yeah, it's a land contract that he stopped with.
Well, that was pretty nice compared to what we got down there on.
On the corner.
On West, and, and I, I do agree that that, that house is probably, also.
We gotta, we gotta get after him again.
Do one, you gotta do all.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get a law, we're gonna get our attorney involved. He came after me, loosening the nuts on my trailer, and I took off and lost a wheel on four sixty-nine. Cost me a thousand bucks just to get towed. And because my name was on that letter that was sent to, now we're gonna get after him. And, and I'll go down there with a club with you. Because I'm not putting up with that crap again.
We have two, we have two, two residents on Second Street.
Well, uh, the, the one on Second Street technically has a West Street address, but yes, the, there's two residents along Second Street that are offenders of this that.
Who enforces our?
That's what I just said, who's gonna?
So.
I mean, town marshal?
Tec- technically speaking in here, it says the town marshal, so this, this is where.
God do that job too.
No, I think we need to send the police off.
I, I do, I do think that Andrew or one of his.
We need a local department to condemn the damn thing.
Uh, there's, I mean, there's multiple for that one particular residence, there's, there's several ordinance violations I feel that are valid. Um, for, uh, this particular nuisance ordinance. But it's been asked of me from a handful of residents if we would be willing to send an ordinance violation in regards to the one, three, four, one, nine, Second Street address.
Send each a copy of it.
Okay.
So do we send that to?
So, I mean, typically what I do is I send it certified.
Right.
And it gets sent to the police, or not, the, the post office. And once I get confirmation that they've signed for the letter, they have ten days from the time that I receive that certified postcard to the time that I can take effective action, uh, whether that be the, or with that being the, the fines and penalties that apply to.
And then do you send that on to the sheriff's department? So do we all have a town marshal?
You'd have to.
Well.
It says after.
Town marshal is our sheriff.
So after the expiration of the notice, um, and that the property owner has failed to abate the, the nuisance ordinance. Um, the town marshal may issue a citation to be issued against that owner. And, and here it says the first offense being twenty-five dollars, second offense being a hundred dollars. And each subsequent offense being two hundred dollars with a, a daily, um.
Daily charge.
Daily charge for every day that they're outside of that violation.
Make sure Claude's name on it, man.
Well, most of those ordinance violations I sign myself, so.
Well, no, you should, it should be the president. You, you don't have that authority to, to assign that, cause you, you don't need to get yourself in a mess. Cause I think that's gotta come from the president. Gotta come from the council.
Yeah. At what point does the county get involved in this? Like if it's that bad to where it can be considered a violation with the board of health and stuff like that and blight? Do we have anything, I mean, does this cover blight? It'd probably be a Zach question.
Not sure. The, for this particular instance here, it's basically just the car out in front.
Right, for that one.
For that one, but for the other one then, that's a completely.
It could be blight, board of health.
Board of health and so on.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Now, that one is, he's a renter, isn't he?
I think so.
As, as far as I know. I don't know if he was on a land contract with.
With, uh, John, I see it's, uh.
Jacob Graver.
Graver, John Graver Junior, I think. Hope John's son, I think.
And is he somewhat responsible in also?
Well, I think whoever the renter, or whoever owns the property.
Whoever has the deed on that bonds line.
So.
And we need to send him a copy also.
The last or, well, last couple ordinances, um, we had a, a resident, a renter on Fairview Drive, uh, in that duplex that's owned by David, uh, Miller. When, when they're renters, I typically send an ordinance violation to the homeowner and to the renter. Uh, that way both of my avenues are covered, um.
Right.
David wasn't too thrilled with me when he got the certified letter, but I was like, hold on, let me explain everything. And then he, he was, he was pretty understanding and went right down there and, and took care of it, um, but. Like I said, I, I know that, that particular car's been out there since last year, if not before then.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
So we're in agreement on both of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we just gotta get on top of it, you know?
Yeah.
And if one on West Street, we've, that and the slit now. And it's getting worse than it was, you know?
And the, uh, the one that I gave you on mowing, I haven't been by lately.
I think that one, that one was well taken care of. I had, I had a couple other mowing ordinance violations I had to send last month as well. Um, and both of those were taken care of quite swiftly.
Good.
Okay. So what are we doing with this, we reading this in by title and doing anything with this or we reviewing?
No, I just, I just provided it to you guys so you could see where I was.
Where our teeth are gonna come out.
No, I think, I think, I think it's a good one.
Like if, if somebody questions why.
Yeah.
They got their ordinance violation, you guys can have it on hand.
Yeah.
Cause it, it, when I was approached those handful of times, I, the first time I was asked, I said, I, I honestly don't know if, you know, like junk vehicles or abandoned vehicles or, you know, cars that don't have wheels on them is included in this and, um, that's where.
Is there a legal amount of time, something says before it's considered?
I think it says ten days.
If you have a vehicle you're working on, it's over ten days.
Oh, oh, I don't, oh, I don't. No.
I don't think it's. I'm just, I'm just wondering how that, I mean, what the time limit is on that.
I don't think we got a time limit on it. I think it's, junk cars, junk car.
I think it's planted and insured, up and down, planted and insured, I think, I think it's not needed in a car.
Then I also think about that lawnmower that's parked in somebody's driveway, but.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Do you have anything else of the bills?
No.
Okay.
Alice talked to me, uh, the other day and about, you know, we was talking about him being an authority person and then being a contractor also. I told him I thought it would be better. I told him I thought it would be better if he was just a ten ninety guy. And, and then I said, he said, well, they pay me by the hour on watering and I said. What does that run per year? He said forty-five hundred dollars, it's been two years in a row. I tell him, just soon he signed a contract for forty-five hundred, be done with it.
I'll, I'll be completely.
He still, he still has to water two or three times a day regardless what it takes to do it.
And I'll be transparent, I've been, I've asked several times, I know I've asked Claude to reach out as well. Asking for his W nine, his COI in a contract. I've held and will continue to hold the five invoices that I have in my office until either.
He, he said he was gonna bring, uh.
I have my, his insurance now, I have the W nine.
Did he bring you a contractor?
But I do not have a contract.
So is he gonna be either or, he's gonna have to be one of them, he's either an employee or a contractor?
Yeah, he's gonna be a contractor, cause he, all the tree stuff is on that and his, his insurance covers him. Instead of us covering him with insurance, so he's not covered when he's watering flowers, if he's a contractor. He has, carries own insurance.
Correct.
So, you know, he'd be happy with that. Yeah, he'd be happy with that.
He'd be happy with that.
So I don't know. I, I, to me, it solves that problem.
I, I agree, he needs to be one or the other.
Yeah, it's one or the other, I think, you know.
Cause I don't know how the state's gonna look at having one part of this set up for hourly, one part set up contracted.
I think it would, it's gonna get really ugly.
I think that's too hard to, to keep it separate, you know, how, how that's done and I think. Myself, I, I, since he's doing all the tree work and.
I think having it blanketed under a contract is gonna be more.
I think it'd be more legit.
Yeah.
You know, so. I tell him, I, that's, I'll bring that up to the council and I think that, that's my opinion. He should just do everything on a contract.
How would we do that then? Like if we have a tree, is it gonna be a different contract? For every time we have him do work then, if we have him cut this tree and this tree or if there's storm damage?
I think having it blanketed like, you know. Processing made, you know, routine.
Tree work is done under his business, I believe, when he does tree work, he's doing under his business.
But I still get invoices from it. So that's where, you know. So if we were blanketed under, you know, that forty-five hundred that included in that forty-five hundred that you're. You know, quoting us annually.
Flowers.
Flowers, that's, that's the forty-five hundred.
So, you know, if.
And I told him, you know, we can do that, but if they need three waterings a day, he has to do it. And he said, well, he'd do it, whatever it takes, you know. But he said he, he looked it up and it was forty-five hundred both years.
So he's talking about contracting just for the watering and not for the tree service?
No, everything.
Everything?
Yeah.
So he want more than forty-five?
Oh, no, that's not.
That'd be one separate contract, the flowers then.
The flowers.
Yeah, another contract.
He's doing as a contractor, not.
Okay.
Not an hourly.
And then the tree service is a different?
That's a different.
Same business, different contract.
Cause that, the trees, we don't know if you wanna have wind and low wind down or not.
Right. So how does that work out with the bookwork?
I mean, that's, it's just two different contracts.
The trees.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Anything else?
No. No? Gee, I got a whole list.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the last couple of months, I've been using my own vehicle. Are we any closer to getting a second truck?
Thank you.
He's, he's been, he's been looking, but I told him that the one was fancy. Well, you don't need, you don't need a super cab like I got, for one. You guys a trash hat out in the heartbeat. Get a work truck.
Oh, yeah.
One seater, you know. By appointment, you know, I mean. Yeah, that, that was, the price was right. But I said, my gosh, you need a bigger bed than what's on the super cab, you know, you need the full bed. So, you know, I think we just need to get a service truck. You know, like a, a wacky guy, something like that, you know?
It is what it is, guys, I just, we just need another vehicle, so I don't wanna use mine anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Man, I mean, you, you've got a nice truck. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to work for you for that.
I'm telling you, yours is probably way more expensive than mine was.
All right. What we're, we're looking at anyways. I'll backlog on that.
If you have a chance, you might, and you see Toby Graver, Graver? I think he would appreciate a nice compliment on what he's done for our town up there along Main Street.
It's beautiful.
Looks amazing, it does, I brought my wife up here the other day and she was just amazing.
My wife couldn't get over how nice that looked.
Yeah. I saw him the other day, we talked to him about it and. Just if you see him sometime, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Also, um, I'm gonna be out of town for most of the month of July. So you'll have to call Wilmer and Jeff if you.
And I'm out for the fifth through the twelfth.
Just me and you, Wilmer?
Me too.
Wilmer says me and you. Like old times.
I'll miss that meeting on the ninth for sure.
Okay, so are we gonna have to cancel that meeting to lack of quorum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
July ninth?
Probably so, but I don't know what my internet will be like.
And you're gonna be going the month?
You say July?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Did you guys notice all the patches are done?
It was the one up by me and it was.
Even got Fox brush done already and Nitsco got theirs done already. Uh, the curb that is left out is gonna be tied in with the entrance when Eddie does the trail, so that's gonna finish up that spot, so. All of our holes are filled, all of our. You're gonna see the rest.
And our golf cart ordinance, we don't have to do anything with it, Kerry's over from previous, so we can scratch that off, right?
Well, he was gonna, we were gonna make changes in there requiring hand signals and. Commuters from outside corporate.
But we have to wait for Zach to do that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Waiting on legal.
We may need to do some checking with, uh, the, the trails. As to who clears the snow. In the winter times. And that being asked, I talked to the Bobcat dealer. And they have a really good deal on Bobcats for municipalities. If we think that would be an, um, an interesting viable thing to do. It sounded like you buy the first one, take care of that, and then every year they give you a new one at no extra cost. Don't quote me on that, but that's always my understanding. And if you'd be interested, we might have Bobby come down and talk to us about that.
I think we can at least hear the spiel.
Pardon?
I think we can at least hear the spiel on it. We'll give them that courtesy at least.
Is, is the Bobcat? I mean, is it worth to have one? I mean, I don't know what I'll, all you do is spin around on it. You know, I, I.
Well, if, if we gotta clear the trail.
Well.
I don't think I want a freaking Bobcat on the trail.
You wanna get a blower on it.
You're gonna want it up with a cover too, though, that's gonna be a long, that's gonna be a long push.
Yeah. It's good, you have to have a blow, a snow blower, you can't, can't use a blade.
A brush room for lighter snow, it wouldn't do much for heavy snow. Just a thought, trying to get ideas as well as a truck. To see what was, you know, what we might do to, we had to have this more, have a little bit more and. Maybe do more with the.
At least, if that's out there, if it's really out there.
Yeah.
And you're a local business, we should at least.
He said he's got him in quite a number of different municipalities and municipalities. I'll get in touch with him and have him maybe in the August meeting, see if he can stop. Okay? See what the deal is. Might, um, take some of that off the tractor kinda thing too. Okay.
Since we were talking about Toby, my, my brain clicked there for a second. So I know a couple of months ago I told you about, about the defacing on the side of the silo. Storage units, I don't know if any of you've driven back there, uh, but there is also defacing on the side of those as well. Quite, quite noticeable. Technically speaking, all of this defacement is also blanketed under that nuisance ordinance saying that structured defacement with word. wording or paint, um, that also falls under these. And I, I had sent this to Scott Lang, um, a couple of weeks ago and I said, hey, just in case you didn't know. Somebody had did this and they said that happened at the same time. Countryside crossing sign was defaced, um, with explicit language as well. Um, so this is well over two years old now, I guess, and I, I, to be honest, I didn't see it up until. When we were hanging flowers and I went, ooh, okay. Um, so I don't know if we wanna send him a letter saying we want that corrected or covered or painted.
I think yes.
Okay. Cause that's a little, a little much.
Yeah. There's businesses down there, plus with the fair coming up, that needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, cause all that public parking usually happens back there too, so that.
Did you guys have a chance to read the contract with AK Wilmer?
Yep.
Did you have some questions?
I think we had a whole lot. He was broke down pretty well.
I thought we had covered it pretty well.
I'm gonna start being your spell checker then.
I'm horrible at that, my life.
You dropped a lot of Rs, that's all I'm saying, a lot of Rs.
I noticed too.
He was like, I think there was one that was like clerk treasurer and it was just RE.
Yeah, I, I seen.
Must've been on the other one I had, cause I had it marked up. I didn't see it. And this one.
Spelling is not my forte at all. I either, I either let him sit, I have the wife look at it, and I go back and read it, and I change it, and I sit.
I don't know how you. Wilmer and Jeff, how you feel about that?
How do you, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Didn't really change too much, I don't think, we just some.
Took out a lot of water plants.
Yeah, the herb and added tank, yeah.
I haven't got to, I'm trying to remember. Does this say one year, two year renewable?
It was exactly the same as the other one.
Which was?
It, it's actually, yeah, it's more like amendment to the. I don't remember, it's like a five year.
Two years.
Yeah.
It'll automatically renew.
Yeah.
Right. And since we have two maintenance guys in town, we extended that, uh, from seven AM to five thirty PM. In case there's water come up or street needs to be cleaned or something happens, it needs to be taken care of later on in the afternoon.
I must've missed that.
Pardon?
I said I must've missed that.
You did.
I don't know if it's in there, those times, many quarters talked, expecting that time zone.
I thought we were on call from four seven.
Yeah. It's more keeping somebody here.
Just one guy has to be here.
Split the shift up a little bit.
Split the shifts, one starts at seven and the other later on.
Yeah, it was more alongside, we get the other vehicles and stuff.
Take terms staying a little later, you know, each guy, I mean, not one guy to do it all the time. I mean, you wanna make a voice. That's a few, Eric.
I'm here too, I'm here too needing sometimes, so.
Yeah, or, you know, I mean, I, we, this song, there's somebody on.
That's what I said, yeah, it's more, yeah, I mean, yeah, we can split them up.
A phone call.
Yeah.
So there's always.
And that's what it was, under the terms of agreement. This was originally started on January two thousand seventeen for five years. And then, which would've got us to what, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two? Then you get three additional terms of two years, so an additional six years onto that. Which means this would expire in.
Yeah, we need to change.
Twenty-eight.
I want you to change it, my, my.
It's up there, yeah.
My initial was then just amending, not, you kind of amending what was already there, that's why.
Yeah, I'm okay with, uh, it's good for.
I can change that.
Cause that would just, I mean, it's just, it's, are we still gonna be good with it's a five-year contract? And then once the five years are up, um, we, we would all have the option for three additional terms of two years each. It would just be two years, two years, two years, get you an additional six years on top of that. We just, we just wanna make sure we get that changed, cause.
Yeah, I can change.
Yeah, cause signed as it is right now, you're only good till twenty-twenty, twenty-eight.
Well, I'm not proposing that we sign it tonight.
Right.
Look, I, I wasn't a pressure, it was a whole new kind of just amending the current contract, that's why nothing was changed.
Yeah.
On that end of it, it was more, it was more cleaning up.
Yeah.
Cause we talked realistically, every year, something could change, it's not gonna be in that contract.
Right.
And, you know, we've kinda tried to blanket, blanket enough over the years, it really didn't matter, we kinda tried to cover it anyway.
Yeah, we've got.
I think that was the hopes of, and on Stephanie's, I think it was clean that up, so it was.
Compliant.
Yeah.
Current.
Right.
Those longer contracts, like, you know, something that's tough to keep it current.
Right.
I just really changed that, that's not an issue too.
Well, it covers you a little bit longer, yeah.
Starting this year, start the five years?
I wouldn't say.
Is that what you're saying?
Cause the way that's worded, that gets you these five years, an additional six, it would cover you for eleven years.
Watching retirement.
If it renews. I would say make the, I think I'm. Make the changes, clean that up the rest of the way, and I think we'd be good, we'll vote on it.
We'll get, get it fixed.
Yep, no, it's. I sent you a original copy via Word. Yeah, we got a Word copyright, may I send you?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little correction of it, a little, some my Rs and stuff that are missing on there. Yeah, and I'll, I'll change that too.
Okay.
Okay. It'll probably be the last week of July, with one more night, I'll do this. That's not an issue with bookkeeping and recordkeeping, yes, no?
Funny story.
You can always absolutely sign it when you get back.
Um, I received, and I, I was actually gonna send it to you later today. Um, I received an email notice Monday that I am on the docket for audit for years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um, they're expecting to be here within the next three to four weeks. Keeping you guys informed.
Better not, you know, for sales things, maybe a week before they show up.
One thing you wanna do, don't call them too often, cause they think, oh, oh, something going on.
Alright. We have reviewed and approved voucher registers for payroll and town or gray bill jumbo.
I wanna know what kind of pens you have, a white out pen that was two hundred eighty five dollars.
I wondered what that was too. That's a nice pen, baby.
No. That's a old of everything, it was just the first receipt I had put in.
That's why they're coming in here, you know.
You should put gold always.
I have, I have, I have white out.
Military white out pens, what that is.
I got the nice, like, roll on one, you just.
Evidently.
I didn't buy that, clean, play them out.
Oh, uh, did Fibra, did, um, Frontier call you about Fiberapi?
No.
For the office here?
No.
They called us.
No.
I think that would be a, that's a cleaner internet, isn't it?
Uh, the, you have a fiber, what do you have now, cable?
Yeah.
DSL line probably?
Well, they called and wanna, you know, they run it, they wanna know if we wanna, if we wanna hook up. And it's cheaper, thirty, thirty three dollars.
Two gig too, right? There's two gigs too, right?
Uh, I'm not sure.
I think that's what Flyer said, you know?
And they have to do a physical hookup too, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they come and put something on the outside. Something, a, a box or something on the outside the house and then everything's wireless from that point.
So, that's what they had to do, almost like a physical hookup on there.
Well, they're, weren't they leaving lines to though?
Well, they, they run it to your house and they put, they put, they put a hard wire to your house. Then from that point, it's wireless in throughout your house.
Well, I'm saying, where are the wires now?
Are, are there wires down?
Yeah, underground.
Yeah, they just, that's what I love about them.
I mean, were they just a main drag or?
How close are wires to?
Well, our town's done that way.
Yeah, they're, we're down in front of my house and so.
Is that what they're doing maybe on overhead too?
Yes.
Yep.
Then they've got, they've got up and down Second Street, huh? That's all done.
Yes, that's all they're able to do by all means.
And they're, they're working night and day on that stuff, I can't believe it, I, I didn't know what they was doing.
That's what all the boring companies through town were doing at the beginning of the summer. They're running out, Frontier's trying to it.
Yeah.
And then they are hard selling people in town, I've gotten lots of complaints.
But it's.
Their westman has it for it too, so.
It, it's about six dollars cheaper than what we was paying Frontier before.
Anyway, and motion to.
I was pretty clean on this, have you looked them over, Wilmer?
Yep.
I made the motion, we pay the bills as submitted. I got a second?
I'll second that. Big boat.
Roll call vote, Jeff.
Aye.
Wilmer.
Aye.
Claude.
Aye.
Motion passes. For both?
Yes.
Vote.
Vote payables.
Oh, it works. Jeff.
Alright.
Can I get a? Roll call vote, Jeff.
Aye.
Wilmer.
Aye.
Claude.
Aye.
Motion passes for payroll.
Yes, we got the payables.
Gross payroll.
Sorry, gross payroll.
What would you better have, a Ford or Chevy?
Not up to me, it's your business, so.
The Chevy, the Chevys that were just came through were cheaper than the Ford, you guys, you guys buying used or new?
I've been looking at used, that are very, very low mileage and that type of.
I would be afraid to go to one of the de, one of those dealers though and.
They got brand new ones on sale for forty grand. I don't know what you guys look at as new, but you got sixty seven in the, sixty seven in the account.
I, I mean, cause sometimes the Chevys were the lower ones this year group, I do believe, but the, the government discount was tagged on them. Ford did not have a tag, so the Ford was a little more expensive. I don't, if you got a Chevy, I don't know what really matters, but. It's, uh, yeah, you can buy whatever, I mean, yeah.
Are you allowed to take the extra money, not spend on the truck and bump it down to the Bobcat?
No.
No?
Not at least for this calendar year. We'd have to unappropriate it, reappropriate it, it's a nightmare.
Also, tagging trucks instead of vehicles, very quick. They don't really need anything, doesn't need anything fancy, it needs to be a motor sized truck.
You have another one of what we got, I'd be alright with it. Just tell you to burn a little bit of gas in the truck.
I will tell, I will tell you power locks and power windows, actually are kinda nice. Cause it's a pain, but, uh. Most trucks come up, I need more. Oh, and, no, I got, I got a twenty twenty two that's not power windows, power locks, but they've got over there.
That was the last one they rolled up. That was the last one they rolled up.
Is that an automatic transmission?
Yeah, it's fleet, it's a fleet vehicle, so that would happen to be their fleet vehicle, which we get fleet, you know, what we're getting fleet vehicle. That just have to have non-power windows and power locks and it is a pain because.
Power windows on here, yeah. That was, um, we brought that to.
Kelly's.
Kelly's.
That was brand new, a tiny, big one.
Two thousand twelve.
Don't be, I mean, give it up, or don't be afraid to look at, call the dealer and ask for the government.
Yeah, right, we gotta ask for it.
They, sometimes they're, they're really cheap.
They might have an extra fleet vehicle on the lot, cause they'll do a good deal.
Or know somebody that does.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they get, they are maybe really prepared to what we go live and far and they're.
I appreciate you guys looking.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
You're some good looking. Jeff.
Yes, sir.
You decided to pay for it.
Here's the papers, got it?
Here's the papers, Jeff. I kept like inching them closer.
Use your big girl voice, you can say something.
I don't know what you're talking about, I don't know. That's just my paperwork. You don't want that.
No, I don't.
No, I don't. I'll stay behind.
They told me you didn't have to come down, we need to do, to do, but he insisted that you all come down, so I threw him, give me another couple of days.
Anything else for the good of the town?
Let her fly.
If not, we need a jury.